Was he around when Harold was from?
Yeah.
Harold was from?
Yeah.
When he died, I remember. And actually, my father-in-law was part of it. They did bump up. And he said, I'm not going to be in the office any longer.
Yeah.
But they did.
Too much.
I don't know. He didn't like that. He literally, literally said, I'm going to use your car and use your office just on this line. Yeah, weird. Everybody said ironically, it was the best pact over there, you know, insulting. And made twice as much money, did what he wanted to, got a travel fee and his wife. So, I mean, in a way, it was a blessing, but it was pretty elegant, you know, sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was. A lot of, a lot of shit.
They called me boss and I'm like, what's this shit? Because he had a wife and a...
Yeah.
Yeah, my dad, because my dad wasn't really a child support. And he said, I'm not trying to talk to you. Yeah, along with our relationship.
Well, actually, I remember there was one of my father-in-law had a, it's almost like a SWAT team, it was like five or six of them. And they went during the planning of this program, I don't know what they call it. So, they were up and down, you know, how these guys, so whatever, the S.R. or something. Dell would get his, his through groups and then they fly in there and they keep the thing running.
Oh, yeah.
So, they break the script, that was their strategy and their work. And they go work, you know, eighteen hours a day, those stuff.
My dad.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning. Yeah. Okay, what do you want to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
The number you're there at?
Is there anyone here from River Valley? Yeah, that's what I thought. Oh, okay, okay, I didn't recognize your camera.
Sorry.
Thanks.
You know, we're still wearing these.
I know you are. Well, that's smart, that's smart. There's a lot of, okay, thanks.
Hello?
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 Yeah, you did.
Hello?
Sorry, wrong number.
You sound very good, you doubt?
Something?
No, I doubt much numbers here. Get enough phone numbers on there, you're calling overseas.
Nah. It wasn't a country call.
Hello?
Morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Good. That's a familiar sounding voice. We, director called a number that we didn't recognize the voice, so we knew we had their own number.
I should have put my glasses on first.
So, we got the right people on the line. It's just you today?
Good morning.
Nikki.
Okay, Nikki, morning.
Morning.
Anyone else? Okay, with that said, we'll have our opening prayer and the Pledge of Leagues before we convene the meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your great love and blessings you have bestowed over our lives. You're familiar with our thoughts and our ways. On many occasions, we fall back on our limited knowledge and strength to solve those issues. Let us remember that you know our heart and thoughts. Your ways are not misguided, and you are full of wisdom. Let us reflect and focus on your will for us. Our nation has turned her back on you in so many ways, and continues to decline socially, economically, and morally. And we realize that you are the God of all creation, love, wisdom, and clarity, and not to push you aside. Establish the work that you would have us to do on our finite days of life. We pray that we are, that those are purpose, we pray that they are purposeful and bring glory to you. Father, today we celebrate the United States Coast Guard's birthday. Since 1790, the Coast Guard has kept the nation's waterways safe. They protect us from drugs, even trafficking, and terrorism. The forty-four thousand five hundred active members of the U.S. Coast Guard are on alert twenty-four seven, and we thank them and ask you for protection over the money only you can provide. Lord, we are thankful that we live in a land of freedoms. May each generation know that is paid for with a price, and never take it for granted. May you bless our meeting and our beautiful valley that you have created. In these things, we humbly pray in your name, amen.
My Pledge of Leagues is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. At this time, we'll convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting, and we'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Missar will not be able to join us today, so it's just Commissioner Mayor Dino and myself. We'll ask for public comments on agenda items only at this time. You have a left?
Nope.
Here you men, we'll move on.
Okay, proclamation, National Health Center Week. Okay. National Health Center Week 2022, a proclamation. Whereas for over ten years, the River Valley Health and Dental, your center for care, our community health center, has provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in Lycum County's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on the health and well-being of the county. Whereas, River Valley Health and Dental is a critical element of the provision of health care in Lycum County, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care for many in our community. Whereas, River Valley Health and Dental continues to offer reliable, affordable, high-quality care to the county's most vulnerable and underserved communities. Whereas, every day, River Valley Health and Dental strives to develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, behavioral health, chiropractic, and pharmacy services, to meet the needs and challenges of our community. Whereas, National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's over one thousand four hundred health center organizations, with over twelve thousand service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth, since the first health centers opened their doors more than fifty years ago. Excuse me. Whereas, during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system, and the tenth anniversary of the River Valley Health and Dental Centers' founding as a federally qualified health center in Lycum County. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Lycum County, do hereby proclaim August seventh through thirteenth, 2022, as National Health Center Week. We encourage all residents of Lycum County to take part in this week by visiting the River Valley Health and Dental Center Open House on Thursday, August eleventh, from four to six p.m., and celebrating the important partnership between our community health centers and the communities they serve. Lycum County Commissioner Scott Almetzger, Chairperson, Tony Armisere, Vice Chairman, Richard Maravito, Secretary. Mr. Chairman, we have the C E, CFO, I believe, here today. And I just want to say, I had the privilege of being on the board that set up the Community Health Center ten years ago, when I was in the state legislature. And it was extremely important, back then, we had a lot of emergency room use for primary health care. And that was driving up the cost for UPMC. UPMC was a strong advocate, and actually provided a lot of the initial support that was needed. And of course, the federal government recognized that one of the ways to bring emergency room care costs down was to have people who needed primary care to go to a health center. And in those ten years, it's really grown. They played a vital role during the, during the pandemic, in terms of both providing vaccines and also testing. And also, they've been very supportive of Let's End COVID. I mean, quite frankly, without them, Let's End COVID's efforts to try to educate the community would not have been possible, because they, they provided so much of the necessary support, so.
Plus, plus the dental that they take around to schools.
Yes. Yeah. So, I don't know if you want to invite?
Yes, would you like to come up, please?
Carla.
Maybe you can introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Carla Sexton. I am the Compliance Officer at the River Valley Health and Dental Center, but I also have responsibility for the marketing and PR for the center as well, so that's why you get to see my face around so much. And I want to thank the commissioners for their support, not just through the pandemic, but through the ten years that we've been at River Valley. And we've been lucky to be able to obtain grants and be able to expand our facilities and do a lot of specialty care for the community, including our mobile dental van, which you'll see out on Thursday as well. So, we're really looking forward to celebrating our tenth anniversary. It's hard to believe that it's been ten years since we became federally qualified. We've been in the community longer than that, but that ten years has been a period of time of substantial growth, and we've kind of taken over the whole Hepburn Plaza and continue to grow. We now have a dental clinic in Jersey Shore, which just opened this year, and we're looking and hoping to expand to Clinton County next year, so.
Wonderful.
And the center is open to anyone, and it's, it's payment on a sliding scale, right?
Absolutely. And we take all medical insurances as well, so we are really a one-stop shop for a lot of people.
Yeah, and it's a high-quality, high-quality place. Well, we'll certainly encourage people to come out next week to the Open House.
Thank you for your invitation.
Thank you, thank you. And Tony Masere is going to actually speak for us, so you guys will be well represented.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a photo.
And extend your thanks to your staff.
I will, absolutely.
Yes.
Good morning. We had a bid for the EPOC overlay project on Lycum County Bridge Number One O One. We had three bidders, HRI, their bid was fifty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. We had a bid from Swank Construction Company, the hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, and then a bid from Mar Allen Concrete Products, and their bid was forty-three thousand seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay. Isn't it always amazing, the range of bids we get when we put in for sealed bids, for public, spending public money? So, we've got a spread here from forty-three to a hundred and fifteen.
It's the importance of it.
Yeah, that's the importance of the, of the public bidding.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome.
Okay, reports. Brainy, vote to approve accounts payable cash requirement report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification are the invoices due through August tenth, 2022, that were paid on August fifth, 2022, in the amount of one million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And they break down as sixty-two point eight-five percent general fund, or one million two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Grants and other sources amounts for one hundred and forty-six thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, or approximately seven and a half percent. RMS's share was five hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirteen cents, twenty-seven point three-four percent. And escrow funds were forty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents, or approximately two point three-three percent. Were there any questions this week?
I don't have any.
No.
Okay.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, info items, mine.
Yep, we're just going out to bid for our fourth quarter off food products for prison and release.
Thank you.
All right, moved on to action items, five point one, PCCD.
Yep. This is a renewal award notice that we received. It's a joint effort with the courts, as well as West Branch Drug and Alcohol. So, a portion of the funds will stay with the county, which will help offset a salary portion for adult probation officer for the drug court area, and then as well some operational costs associated with those services. And then the remainder will go to West Branch Drug and Alcohol as a single county authority.
What's the remainder amount that goes to West Branch?
So, West Branch will be getting two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and six dollars, and then the county will be getting, I think it's, check this, one hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-four.
And do we know how West Branch utilizes this one?
Yep, I have a breakdown if you just want, if you want me to talk about.
Yeah.
So, West Branch uses their funds for personnel, which includes forestaff, some travel and training for their annual conference, client transportation, drug and alcohol testing supplies, graduation supplies, M.A.T. treatment, physician visits, treatment education materials, and treatment services. The bulk of those go into treatment services at one hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions?
Nope.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, mine.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to appoint George Logue to the Lycum County Zoning Hearing Board. This is a five-year term.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so carried, I want to thank Mr. Logue for volunteering to be on this board, and all our board members for all our boards, for the time that they take to serve on those boards. Each one of them are vital for our community, and they take their own time and resources to volunteer for those boards. We thank, we thank each one of them for their service.
Okay. All right, five point three, and five point four, Jerry.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, CIO for the county. Before you, for five point three, is a battery replacement for our data center UPS. This provides backup power should there be a power outage or glitch. Keeps our systems running in proper order. This is part of a five-year replacement cycle, and these are now due at a cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. It is part of the 2022 budget.
Okay, any questions? Or motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And then, five point four, is a refresh of our data center equipment. This is a five-year lease program with Dell. The last time we did this was six years ago. Comes to a point where our annual maintenance becomes a point of diminishing returns. So, it was determined that this year, we'll jump and do an upgrade of our backend systems. The annual payment on the lease is two ninety-three, six oh five, and forty-seven cents, totaling one point three four four million over five years with a one-dollar buyout. And this is also being paid for with twenty-two, twenty-two budget funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So, Jerry, so Dell had a lease, had a service agreement with us, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, you said that it gets to the point where the equipment ages out. Makes sense. Our, our equipment becomes obsolete in the world of technology. So, what is it on the backside that we're, that we're paying one point three million for? Is it the cloud?
No, well, it's, it's our own cloud.
It's our own internal cloud?
Yeah. We, we run a virtual environment, so this is the hardware, basically five servers that run more than eighty.
These are, these are the virtual cloud that we, I can remember years ago with Carl.
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay. So, these, these are gone now. Their useful life is extended.
There's, there's one piece of the puzzle that Dell is discontinuing this year.
Okay.
So, that's a caveat to it. You know, we, we can't get support on one piece of the puzzle. So, it's another weight on the scale to do the upgrade this year.
Okay. It's expensive, I know, but I, I remember those, those virtual clouds, or virtual servers.
Just for comparison purposes, we did go through the exercise of determining what it would be to take our environment and put it in the cloud, and that comes out to three sixty annually, and we own nothing in.
Right, in perpetuity.
Yeah.
With increases as.
And it doesn't decrease or remove every expense that we have here today. It just, it's an add.
If we were to transition to the cloud, Alan, what'd that take?
Couple of years. And that's if we have technologies from our vendors that actually are cloud compatible.
So, you have created a internal cloud that allows us to use many more, has many more capabilities and storage space, and we don't have to do it externally.
Correct.
But we do it through the, through these.
Yeah, back, back in the day, we, when we were in the courthouse, we were, you know, bursting at the seams. We had lots of racks and tables and everything with lots of physical servers that cost ten to, you know, twenty thousand dollars apiece. So, as you add the replacement cost of those every five years, every five to seven years, we buy the hardware, we condense everything into literally something that'll fit inside this podium, and we run our entire environments, both here and the Department of Public Safety.
So, it's our own cloud within the cloud?
It's our own cloud in the cloud of TSP.
Yeah, we don't have, we're not in the cloud, the external cloud.
Right, we're, it's an internal cloud.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll move to approve.
Okay, I'll second. I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so carried, I want to thank Mr. Logue for volunteering to be on this board, and all our board members for all our boards, for the time that they take to serve on those boards. Each one of them are vital for our community, and they take their own time and resources to volunteer for those boards. We thank, we thank each one of them for their service.
Okay. All right, five point three, and five point four, Jerry.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, CIO for the county. Before you, for five point three, is a battery replacement for our data center UPS. This provides backup power should there be a power outage or glitch. Keeps our systems running in proper order. This is part of a five-year replacement cycle, and these are now due at a cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. It is part of the 2022 budget.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, mine.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to appoint George Logue to the Lycum County Zoning Hearing Board. This is a five-year term.
Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so carried, I want to thank Mr. Logue for volunteering to be on this board, and all our board members for all our boards, for the time that they take to serve on those boards. Each one of them are vital for our community, and they take their own time and resources to volunteer for those boards. We thank, we thank each one of them for their service.
Okay. All right, five point three, and five point four, Jerry.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning, Commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, CIO for the county. Before you, for five point three, is a battery replacement for our data center UPS. This provides backup power should there be a power outage or glitch. Keeps our systems running in proper order. This is part of a five-year replacement cycle, and these are now due at a cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. It is part of the 2022 budget.
Okay, any questions? Or motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
And then, five point four, is a refresh of our data center equipment. This is a five-year lease program with Dell. The last time we did this was six years ago. Comes to a point where our annual maintenance becomes a point of diminishing returns. So, it was determined that this year, we'll jump and do an upgrade of our backend systems. The annual payment on the lease is two ninety-three, six oh five, and forty-seven cents, totaling one point three four four million over five years with a one-dollar buyout. And this is also being paid for with twenty-two, twenty-two budget funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So, Jerry, so Dell had a lease, had a service agreement with us, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, you said that it gets to the point where the equipment ages out. Makes sense. Our, our equipment becomes obsolete in the world of technology. So, what is it on the backside that we're, that we're paying one point three million for? Is it the cloud?
No, well, it's, it's our own cloud.
It's our own internal cloud?
Yeah. We, we run a virtual environment, so this is the hardware, basically five servers that run more than eighty.
These are, these are the virtual cloud that we, I can remember years ago with Carl.
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay. So, these, these are gone now. Their useful life is expended.
There's, there's one piece of the puzzle that Dell is discontinuing this year.
Okay.
So, that's a caveat to it. You know, we, we can't get support on one piece of the puzzle. So, it's another weight on the scale to do the upgrade this year.
Okay. It's expensive, I know, but I, I remember those, those virtual clouds, or virtual servers.
Just for comparison purposes, we did go through the exercise of determining what it would be to take our environment and put it in the cloud, and that comes out to three sixty annually, and we own nothing in.
Right, in perpetuity.
Yeah.
With increases as.
And it, and it doesn't decrease or remove every expense that we have here today. It just, it's an add.
If we were to transition to the cloud, Alan, what'd that take?
Couple of years. And that's if we have technologies from our vendors that actually are cloud compatible.
So, you have created a internal cloud that allows us to use many more, has many more capabilities and storage space, and we don't have to do it externally.
Correct.
But we do it through the, through these.
Yeah, back, back in the day, we, when we were in the courthouse, we were, you know, bursting at the seams. We had lots of racks and tables and everything with lots of physical servers that cost ten to, you know, twenty thousand dollars apiece. So, as you add the replacement cost of those every five years, every five to seven years, we buy the hardware, we condense everything into literally something that'll fit inside this podium, and we run our entire environments, both here and the Department of Public Safety.
So, it's our own cloud within the cloud?
It's our own cloud in the cloud of TSP.
Yeah, we don't have, we're not in the cloud, the external cloud.
Right, we're, it's an internal cloud.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll move to approve.
Okay, I'll second. I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
Luckily, there's no rain in our clouds.
So, or lightning.
There's no rain on our parade, right, coming up.
Jerry, you missed it.
What?
I said, but is there a cloud in your coffee?
Uh, no.
Okay, next.
Five point five, or five point six, Nancy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can take Commissioner Missar's up, so.
Thank you.
Do you want these for, for Commissioner Masere when I'm talking? I need these right now.
Okay, that works, thanks.
You're welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. The first item I have is five point five, is vote to approve agreement with Central County's Youth Center, 2022 budgeted item. Don't know what to say, you see, the bottom line is, it's a ninety-five dollar increase. It was three hundred dollars. It's a thirty-one point six percent increase.
Who's your touch?
I tried, and the, the flawed answer was no.
Well.
But they're detention centers.
That's bound to happen sooner or later.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm kind of interested to see what next year is, because next year, I'm going to put, I'm going to try and put the brakes on this, but it's really hard, because this is run by Central County Commissioners.
Right.
And we really don't have a, we really don't have a say in their prices.
Yeah, okay.
They are what they are.
And we know that in the past, there's been difficulty in having them take some of our kids.
Yeah.
They, they pick and choose whether they want to.
Yes, they do.
What was I going to ask you? How many do we have there now?
Right now, none.
None, okay. And this, have we used it this year to date?
Yes.
Do you remember how many?
Um, may have maybe one or two kids there.
Okay.
We try to, we're trying our best to avoid trying to like put them on electronic monitors and stuff if we can.
Right.
To keep them out of the detention centers, they're very expensive.
And they're, oh, distance away, so it's harder for families to-
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
One second, Fair side.
Hi.
Hi, so Kerry, thank you.
Did the worst one first, so now we'll do five point six, which is vote to approve amendment with Justice Works Youth Care, twenty twenty-two budgeted item, as with three percent increase across all of their programs. So like, um, the rapid response, the VIP, it was seventy-seven dollars. Was seventy-seven, now it's seventy-nine point three one.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
A motion?
I'll move to approve.
One second, on Fair side.
Hi.
Kerry, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Comment.
Nancy?
Yeah, I have a, I have a statement I'd like to make. Last Thursday, July twenty-eighth, the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners, public meeting, a vote was approved two to zero to approve one million, twelve thousand, and two hundred and forty dollars in funding to the Old City Williamsport LLC for the East End Gateway Project. First, I'd like to commend Dr. Kent Traki and the Board of Directors of Lycoming County for their vision for the college in the city of Williamsport. They have accomplished many of their goals over the past several years to improve the college in the city. Next, I'd like to thank Pine Ridge Construction Management for investing in our community. Both entities are investing millions of dollars for education and economic development into this section of our community. I have been supportive of the East End Gateway Project and the Old City Revitalization. My further comments are in no way against any, either entity or the overall project. Last week was the first Commissioners' meeting I have missed in three years due to a planned vacation with my wife. On Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, my two colleagues called me while I was on vacation to express they had met with the college and the developers, and the college and developer were requesting a million dollars towards the project for a parking garage. Is my understanding that this garage is forty thousand square feet of one hundred and sixty-five parking stalls? And Commissioner Marabito made a note on the phone that the county would receive forty-two spaces. I stated to both of them on the phone that I was not ready at that point to commit to that amount of money as I had several questions that needed to be answered. Some of those questions were, what is the amount the city was willing to invest and where the money was gonna be coming from, among other questions I had. Commissioner Mousar stated he was, um, he stated he was calling to see if I would agree to place it on a future agenda. As the chairman, I'm the one that sets the agenda, and I agreed that when I returned from vacation, I would place it on a future agenda. They noted that the governor recently reopened the RACI grant process, and there was a short window till August nineteenth. On Thursday, July twenty-eighth, my two colleagues called me after the Commissioners' public meeting to advise me they had amended the agenda to add a request for funding to Old City Williamsport LLC for the East End Gateway Project. They approved the request after a two-o vote for the monies to be allocated from the ARPA funds that the county has received. The county would be contributing three point eight percent, the city three point one percent, the state another four percent of the total project for the college, and the, and the college and developer paying approximately eighty-nine percent of the overall plan. I believe my colleagues did not have prior knowledge that Dr. Traki nor the developer were gonna be in attendance that morning, nor do I believe that Dr. Traki nor the developer did anything wrong. It was my understanding that there was a miscommunication about the timing of when the item was gonna be placed on the agenda. What I find disturbing about this action is that it was voted and approved so quickly without the consideration of the chairman. In seventy-two hours, a million dollars was discussed, voted, and passed. My colleagues could have attempted to contact me by phone to join a meeting, or could have stated the chairman is not available this morning, but out of respect, we will table this till next Thursday, since he has informed us that he has several questions. I fully understand there was a deadline for the RAPP grant, and that was to be August nineteenth. Since my return, I've spoke to a state official that has knowledge of the process, has knowledge of the process. The homework could have been completed, and then decisions by the Commissioners could have been made prior to the deadline. So this decision was made without my input and without my questions being answered, and the monies are being taken from the ARPA funds that are being discussed at this time by all three Commissioners. I'm not sure at this time which category these monies are gonna come under. The chairman did not have the opportunity to vote on a million, on a million dollar allocation out of our twenty-two million dollar allocation. That's the second decision on that day that I was not privileged to vote on. A decision that involves a million dollars warrants all three of our input. Since my return from vacation, I have spoke to the city. I've been informed they have not yet voted and have not approved their three point one percent of the overall project as reported. It is wrong how this matter was handled last week, and it does not display good government. I would hope in the future that my colleagues would be more mindful moving ahead so monies are allocated from all three of us, and we're all involved in the decision-making process. We are all elected officials, and when, when one of us is excluded, it's a slap in the face of those voters that place that individual in the office. The Office of Commissioner was designed to make sure that the three of us have equal representation, and we need to make sure that happens in the future. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I certainly want to apologize for how this occurred. I can tell you, though, that I don't think we said it's coming out of ARPA funds, I think we said that, we didn't say where it was coming from, whether it comes from ARPA or Act thirteen, but that's sort of beside the point.
There's a resolution upstairs that said it was coming out of ARPA funds.
Well, the resolution needs to be changed, because it's not necessarily coming out of ARPA funds, it could come out of Act thirteen, that's something that is, we don't, we don't need to, the public vote to change, but I want to apologize, and I, I haven't seen Commissioner Mousar today and-
He was aware I was gonna make this statement, and he's already apologized.
Yeah, no, I'll apologize, and, and unfortunately, what happened is that, well, first of all, actually, you weren't here last term, Commissioner Mousar and I had allocated money last Board of Commissioners, six hundred thousand dollars to the east, to the new Old City Project. I said at the meeting on Tuesday, so on Tuesday, we met with them, we can't vote when we meet with people, but I feel it's important to give people my sense of where I'm at, and I told them flat out that I was supportive of it. That doesn't mean anything, except it allows them to be able to say to whomever that, well, we have one Commissioner who's supportive. Part of what our concern here was that the governor opened up the Act thirteen, I'm sorry, the RCAP-
RCAP.
Grants on June, July nineteenth, and we met with them about five or six days later, so we're already into July twenty-fifth, I think, or what day did you say it was? Yeah, July twenty-eighth, yeah, no, the meeting was the twenty-eighth, right, the public meeting, so we met with them on the twenty-sixth, and there was some concern expressed about their ability to get this and then get the city on board in order to meet the deadline for the RCAP with the state, because the state wants to see that the county and the city, and this is not by way of any excuse or anything, this, I just want you to understand that there wasn't an intentional effort to try to cut you out, and I apologize for the way it was done, I mean, I, I totally agree with what you're saying, and I, I think that it makes a lot of sense, and too often, things are often brought to us at the last minute. Now, in this case, they just had learned that the RCAP was being reopened, and so they came to us and they needed to then get whatever was gonna happen with us to get the city to vote and so forth. Both Commissioner Mousar and I were surprised to see Dr. Traki in the office, in the audience that day, and I, and from what I understand, there was a text sent from the planning department to him, and somehow there was a mistake on the date, and instead of saying, "Come to the August fourth meeting," it said, "Come to the July twenty-eighth meeting." And at that point, we had to decide, do we, and, and I guess the concern on their part was that they had a lot of stuff to do in order to make the August nineteenth, so I, I, I totally appreciate what you're saying, and we certainly, I think all three of us will be mindful in the future, so that we don't do it.
And all I'm saying is, is I could have been reached by phone, you know that, and, or, it could have been tabled till today.
Yeah, oh, no, there's no question, we could have tabled, well, it wasn't on the agenda, we had to change the agenda, we, we were concerned that, we didn't wanna do things that would diminish their ability to get more state money, because it was, it was a situation where we're putting up some money, and the total amount that the county's putting up, the three point-
Three point one.
Three point one percent.
Three point eight to county, the city's putting up three point one.
Yeah, the city's putting up three point one, the county-
Which is committed, yeah.
No, I know.
They haven't had a meeting.
Right, they haven't had a meeting, well, hopefully, our support for it will encourage them to support it, and I think that sometimes elected bodies are not willing to step out and do something until they see other elected bodies take action, and I think one of our concerns was, we wanted to be sure that they understood that the county was in it, but you have a perfectly legitimate concern there, it, it is a lot of money, I don't want you or the public to think that we did it flippantly, I was right out, very upfront, that I would support the project, so if it came on the twenty-eighth or the fourth, and it wasn't, you know, it would pass or not pass, I was gonna support it, so, but, but I understand how you feel, how you feel slighted by that, and we certainly will work to avoid.
It's not me, I represent the people that are voting me in office.
Absolutely.
It's a slap on them, and I watched the fifty-seven minutes of the, of the meeting, watched the entire meeting.
Right.
Not once was the Commissioner, the chairman, mentioned about he had additional questions. There was, do we, do we have any questions, or all the questions answered was the statements? Well, the chairman had questions, and they weren't answered.
Okay, all right. I made a point during that question and answer to state that the county would receive the forty-two parking spaces, and I made a point of stating that, yeah, the county would have input into whether or not, what the entity is that takes over the parking garage, because we have concerns about it becoming a non-taxable entity, if it goes to the, to the parking authority, so, but I, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, public comment?
We have it from the audience. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, my name's Tom Adams, uh, I live at Syracuse, Williamsport. Tough situation sometimes, uh, doing government. Appreciate your work, uh, everything that people do for us, you know, in our country. Had a little trouble sleeping last night, I put on a, made a mistake, but a little bit of informational news on, and, uh, just the, just the things that are going on in our country with, you know, and this is an ongoing theme, I guess, uh, with, I think, an attack on our youth, our system, our education system, just, once again, removing any kind of morality out of, out of our whole society, out of our education, and references to God, and it's, it's a concerted attack, you know, this is what communists do, and it's in the communist manifesto to do these kind of things, and I just would hope that all people, when, when we vote, we vote with some of these things in mind, who supports, uh, communist ideals like, like, uh, violence, the violence against, see, these pro-life centers are being attacked, you know, that, that's more bloodshed on, on, you know, people that support that type of stuff, I mean, they're attacking innocent centers that really help a lot of women and families, especially after children are born, and if there's full support, and, you know, I hate to say it, you know, with the abortion centers, they don't support that type of stuff, and they actually support the, uh, the harvesting of, of organs and, and tissue, and, and it becomes a marketplace. And, and I read in a, a letter from a doctor in the Sun Gazette, he, he responded to an article by a doctor about abortion, that was the main issue, but one of the, one of the statements made in, in the article was that, well, life starts at conception. Well, this doctor, Arno Vosk, an M.D. out of Williamsport, apparently says that, um, we, I'm sorry, uh, like, there's no, absolutely no scientific consensus as to when a human life begins, honest, honest medicine teaches us this, well, I hope I never have to have that doctor for care, because science definitely shows that anything's growing is alive, and that's, that's life, you know, fed things don't grow, and only, only humans ever come out of the womb, so, uh, it's this kind of misinformation, this type of mindset is destroying the, the Western world, and, um, we just need to stand against it and continue to have a reliance on God and keep Him in our forethoughts and, and realize that morality and, uh, education have to go together, and religion. Just one, one note, August seventeenth, seventeen eighty-nine, George Washington signed in a bill, the Northwest Ordinance, and Article Three of that ordinance is about education, was that religion, morality, and knowledge were the main tenets for, for public education, and wanted to make sure that people knew that when they spoke about religion, it's Christianity, that's what was gonna keep people's freedom, that the full knowledge of that, and fear of the Lord is beginning of knowledge, and this is what they're talking about, not just biblical knowledge, but all knowledge. And they started ten, ten years after the revolution, they started more universities in the country prior, a hundred fifty years prior to that revolution, because they wanted to make sure that their descendants were gonna be well-educated in what brings about freedom and liberty and what keeps it.
Hey, thank you, Tom. Any other point to comment?
Got some online.
Yes.
Start at the top. See. Just reading, Jacob Stoppard, first, Visa Flowers, second, Atara Yasharal, so y'all is always dependent on Dell, and any upgrades, you gotta pay. What about, about more stimulus during this mock inflation business? MCG, thank you Commissioners Metzger and Marabito for responding positively to my concern about providing a shelter for the citizens of Lycoming County in the event of a radioactive attack. Carlos Saldivia, aside from political shenanigans, what does the county get in return for the one million for the parking lot the college loan and revenue from? Atara Yasharal, that's the big picture, Carlos, I agree. Carlos, two thumbs up. Atara, no accountability, no revenue for the city. SMH. Atara, I need help, they don't, they do not agree that fast for me and my family. I would like to open a daycare center in need finding. SMH. Carlos, the city waiting for another government agency to take the lead is precisely why the county should have more valid reasons as to what's in it for us, supporting institution that has declining attendance. Atara, separation of church and state. Atara, he ran.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I do wanna respond to the answer if they were here. Aside from the tangible forty-two parking spaces, there's always the question of how do we stimulate economic development, and, um, you know, what's happening with this project is what's called a public-private partnership, which is, as, as the chairman mentioned, about eighty-eight percent of the funds for this project are coming from the private sector, or eighty-nine percent, they're coming either from the developer for, or for, from Lycoming College, which is a private institution, and those funds from Lycoming College come from alumni and other individuals. So the question becomes, you know, it's a, it's a tough question whether we should put public funds in, but when I weigh the challenges we face in declining population in the county and the challenges we face in, um, having a place where people will come and put down roots so that we can build houses, so that we can reduce the tax burden, versus the use of, in either Act thirteen money or, or American Rescue Plan money, not taxpayer real estate funds, I come down on the side of supporting it because I think that in the big picture of trying to revitalize our county, we need to have that kind of investment in infrastructure. So a developer might come in and say, "Listen, I'm willing to put up the office building, and I'm willing to put up and sell the townhouses and stuff, but I don't wanna build a parking garage because I'm not in the business of running parking garages." And of course, you can't have the building without the parking garage, because there won't be any place to have people park. Should it be a hundred percent on the private developer? One could argue that, should it be a hundred percent on the public? One could argue that, too. I, I think that in a situation like this, where the private sector is putting in eighty-nine percent, and we're being asked to build some infrastructure in terms of the parking garage, our, our one million dollar contribution from either Act thirteen, which is the KS drilling funds, or American Rescue Plan, which is the federal funds, I think it's appropriate, and I think, aside from the whole decision-making process, that's a whole, that's a different kettle of fish, and, and I hope nobody in this county holds it against Commissioner Metzger, um, because obviously, uh, he didn't vote on it, although you're supportive of it, so I won't ask you how you would vote, because that's sort of irrelevant at this point, but, um, and, but I think that if you have questions, you ought to raise the questions, if you have questions other than the ones that have been answered, like-
I still have questions, I, I'll raise them.
No, I think you should, because I think we should get those questions, those answered from, uh-
Yeah, I don't think at any point that we should spend a million dollars in three days.
I understand that, but I guess my point is that you, we can reverse decisions, and if you raise questions that are not appropriately answered to your satisfaction and affect our, our decision-making, which has happened on other issues, not a million dollars, but all of us have raised questions that the others didn't think about, which is the whole point of having three Commissioners, um, you should raise them, because we can reverse something before August nineteenth, you know, I mean, actually, August nineteenth isn't even a drop-dead deadline anyway, in the sense that, you know, we could always reverse at any time, but I would hope we wouldn't do that, but I think it's important for you to raise them, that's the only thing I want to respond to.
One more that just popped up. Bill Fenderson is asking, is there an update on the airport?
Well, I think the update on the airport-
Recently.
No, the update on the airport is we're waiting to see, um, and I'm not sure whether the-
We had that meeting back in, was it early July, late June?
Yeah, and I don't know, I wasn't at the chamber update, it didn't come-
No.
Nothing was said, no, we, we are, the airline that possibly might be coming in with, with not jets, but with a nine-seater plane, is awaiting a bid response on another airport, and that's where we are with the airport.
Two out of, two out of three, if they didn't get them, they were gonna come to us.
They were gonna come to us, yeah.
Another state.
Yeah.
They were in Indiana and Illinois.
But what I would say is contact, all citizens should contact their federal senators and congressmen and say, "We need you to push the airlines with some federal legislation" to say that you have to serve all airports, that it isn't, you know, that was the case, and this is an example, this is really important, I think, for people to understand, we often talk about how regulations, um, you know, are bad for business, well, there was a regulation prior to the deregulation of the airline industry in the nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty period, that's, that forced airlines to serve all airports, and in airline deregulation that happened over fifty years ago, that went away, so they don't have to serve us. that happened over 50 years ago, that went away, so they don't have to serve us. If they can't make money serving us, they don't have to serve us. That's particularly a slap in the face when we use federal funds to help them out with the ARP, I mean, with the coronavirus pandemic and stuff, so, you know, you should, you have to continue to push the federal officials to try to do something, and we as local and state will continue to push, too.
Royal Airlines continue to take a beating, the state college just lost one of their, their carriers, and so they're one of the bicker Royal Airports, and they've lost one of their carriers, so it continues to take a beating, the Royal Airports.
Two more just popped up.
Yeah.
All right, Carlos Saldivia, fair enough, Commissioner Marabito, but what was the pitch from Lycoming College regarding the reason?
The reason to have us involved? Yes. Well, I think that, like, I think that Lycoming College and the developer are saying, "Listen, we have put in, you know, we're putting $20 million into economic development." Now, that's even separate from what the college did with the entrance to the college and with the music center, and granted, those, that's their facility, and that's their mission to serve students, right? So one could say, "Well, they're just doing what their mission is," but I think what we have to look at is the bigger picture. I know people, and I know Carlos Saldivia has a good friend, a couple that went to Lycoming College and chose to stay here after, and have made their home here for the last 40 or 50 years, and have bought their house and other houses they've fixed up. There's a couple I'm thinking of, and he can, he can, I think, no, but my point is that when people come to Lycoming College, some of them stay, and right now, the biggest challenge we face in this county is repopulation, hands down. Honestly, repopulation and, and the problems with drugs, because the drugs are robbing people of, you know, of our workforce and our youth, so. Anyway, so to answer your question, it's sort of, we all have to look at it as, as working together to try to accomplish this.
Okay, any other comments?
The last one is from Atara, just for revitalizing.
Okay. Tom, real quick. Yep.
I think, let me come up, or?
Yeah, just...
Okay.
I'll give you a minute.
All right. One of, one of the problems, once again, with, with the airlines, there's one carrier that has reported, this, right here. Yep. The pilot's union and a major US airline internally reports a 300% rise in long-term disability claims this year among its members who are nearly all vaccinated. Remember, for his vaccines are really causing a lot of damage, especially pilots, because of the altitude.
There's definitely a pilot shortage.
Yeah, and that's what's causing the problems, that there's the change in the altitude and...
That's another factor, is pilot shortage.
There's an, I think there's another pilot shortage. Yeah, but that's okay, you know, I think it's good, while we don't want to get into a complete back and forth, I think it's not often that, that constituents have an opportunity to come and ask us questions and hear what we think, so, go ahead, Mr....
All right, from Carlos, is the Williamsport area school district kicking in some cash into the parking lot? After all, they'll be the people that will benefit the most from the taxes.
Well, I don't think they're permitted, probably under the state education code, because that money is appropriated for state education, and it isn't a parking garage that will serve the school district. It's down in the...
They will benefit the most on the taxes.
Well, when they benefit, we benefit, right? When we get more people contributing to school taxes, then it lowers the burden on everyone. Yeah.
It's entitled to his statement.
Right, oh, no, absolutely, everyone's entitled to their statement, I just, I don't want, this is, we all benefit when our kids get educated, right?
Okay, anybody else from the audience? Hearing none, our meeting's adjourned. Our next meeting will be August the 11th, right here at 10:00 a.m. in this room. Thank you, have a great day.
Oh, did you want to talk, yes, come and talk. Scott?
Come on, come back, give me your part of this.
Okay, give me one second.
I was on here last week.
No, come on back, I'll be right back.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tom's going to go back there. I'll be right back.
I have an update for you guys.
Pat?
Yes.
Here, here's my comment.
Totally messed up my week, I did a wonderful article about that last week, now I got one more to do here.
Director McDermott.
I got an update for you guys, hold on.
I can tell, I can tell, bro. It was obvious.